All right, welcome to this regular, tonight's regular business meeting. We will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And as we have our moment of silence, if you could keep the Parker family in prayer, who Jeff Parker, CEO of MARTA, as we probably all are aware of, passed on Friday, I believe it was, so keep the family lifted up in prayer, please. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening. Welcome to our January 18, 2022, regular business meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do any members want to make any amendments?
All right, hearing none. I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next, we will have our public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residency. Speak clearly into the microphone. You must be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Teresa Tally.
Teresa Tally, Hampton, Georgia. I spoke with the Refuge Department because I'm always calling them to cut grass or pick up trash, and they don't mind. But the last time I called, I had a conversation with one of the person, and she said, "It's overwhelming. They really need help." I said, "Well, have you talked to the Commissioners about it?" She said, "No, we just do whatever they ask us to do." So I guess the problem I have, when you all took the beautification program away, it was like, "No, we not going to pay for it. We don't want it to come out of our budget." I don't think whoever was over the department, they mustn't do a good job, or even if they even knew what they was doing. When you put certain people over certain departments, they really need to know what they're doing, and we didn't have that. So I asked someone to ask the acting sheriff, could the inmates come back? Because they was really helping the Refuge Department out. The acting sheriff said, "No." So Chairman, I know it's not your job, but I feel like as the chairman, can you at least ask the warden and the acting sheriff, can they help? It's not about anyone on this board right here. It's about us cleaning up the community. It would really help. I know for me, I enjoy seeing the prisoners out cutting the grass, picking up trash. Now it's only two prisoners that could do it. Taking our voice and our choice away from us, I asked some of my neighbors, and they cried. And the reason they did, because a lot of my neighbors don't have the income. So what they did, they teamed up with their neighbors. In one month, they paid three months, and the next month, they three months. If you all take this over, this would put so much undue stress on us. We have to make this our decision. Some of the things that I suggested on January 4th, just try it. All I'm asking you to do, to just try it. Put out a dumpster one time throughout the county and ask the residents to throw away their unwanted trash. At least try something before you all forcefully take it over. That's all we're asking. So please, Chairman.
So let me say this, in reference to the sheriff, the warden, and the
Refuge.
And Refuge Department. They are actively communicating, and they got areas that are designated. And the COO is pretty much like the mediator or coordinator, make sure that those efforts are being completed. However, we are having staffing issues because you got to have a sworn officer that's going to be out with the prisoners. And then the state of the prisoners have to be, you know, you have to look out for the state of the prisoners in this pandemic as well. Not making an excuse, but at the same time, what you're asking us to do, we are doing that as. Now, as far as what the sheriff does, that's incumbent upon him to do as he sees fit. The interim sheriff, I think it's Chief Deputy Roland Boyer. So I will have that conversation again with him if his crews have not been out and see if he will be willing to dispatch more of them. But again, you have to have a sworn officer to accompany those inmates out. So yes, I hear what you're saying, and we will continue that discussion.
Can we at least try putting out the bins?
Yeah.
Just, can we at least just try?
The staff, we're talking about trying to discuss Amnesty Day. So that is something that we're discussing. It might not be a dumpster, it could be a number of ways that we can do that. But again, got to think about manpower. Everybody put stuff out that has to be picked up, or other agreements and contracts have to be entered into, and that might take a little while to do.
Well, just to say, they did it in Riverdale. They put dumpsters behind Kroger. They put like 20 dumpsters back there a couple of years ago. And everybody, they just put up a big old sign, and they just said, "If you want to throw your household goods away, put it there." And it worked. So maybe if you all talked to, Chairman, talk to the mayor, because from my understanding, she was the one who set everything up.
Actually, that did not work.
It worked.
They had so much trash and so much pickup, and it took so many people, so much money and all, and they haven't done it again.
Well, that's why we pay taxes. So use our tax dollars.
To your point, ma'am, that, like I said, we're looking at ways, might not be that, but there are other ways that we can try to address that. So thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Tally.
Glenn Cook.
Good afternoon, Chairman Turner. I live in Clayton County, but my address is Riverdale.
Just state your name for me.
Glenn Cook, 247 Hickory Trail, Riverdale, Georgia. I'm here to talk about some of the same things the previous person here was talking about, is trash. Our trash may not be like hers in the Riverdale-Clayton County area, but between Riverdale High School and Riverdale Middle School, it's very bad, very bad. Roads are potholes everywhere. You can't drive 10 feet without a pothole. Trash all down the wooded area, that wooded area in front of the high school is the back of our subdivision. So we have trash all down through there, all the way. That's one item. The second item is code enforcement. In our subdivision, we're trying to get someone to come in and ticket these cars that have been sitting on the side of the street for more than a year. We've called code enforcement. I haven't seen a ticket or a green sticker, nowhere. Some of the cars, the trailers, have absolutely no tags. Now, we suffered through the downgrading of our homes, because I've been there for 30 years. We suffered through the downgrading of our homes when the school system was on its credit nation. But we have stayed here. The charge of the people there are 30-year people. We stayed there. We do a lot of cleanup. We clean up the curbs, the gutters, the storm drains. We do that. We come out periodically and get shovels, a crew, and do it. We don't come to the county. We don't say, "Come and help us out." We know we should, but we don't. All we asking is that Roberts, clear up that trash, come through and get these people to move these cars. How can we keep our property value up if all this is still in our subdivision? Now, we got a small, small homeowner, such that it's small. We don't offer a whole lot of limitations to our neighbors. So how is this small, our dues are small.
What subdivision do you live in, sir? What subdivision do you live in?
Roundtree Forest subdivision.
Roundtree Forest?
Forest, yes.
Say again. Does that be, so you're in unincorporated Clayton County?
Yes.
Okay. So the first item that you have with the trash between the schools, have you spoken to the mayor in the city of Riverdale Council? That area in the roadway is actually in the city.
Chairman, excuse me. I actually sent, made a call to Refuge, and we cleaned up right there between the middle school and the high school. They cleaned that up, and they also cleaned up Roberts. But that was right before Christmas, when I'd come through there. Now, as far as the illegal cars, I've not heard anything about that. And I can give you, I can give you my car number, and you can call me on that.
You can just drive through there any day.
Yeah, I did, right before Christmas. Yes, sir.
Roberts, are you saying that potholes belong to the city? The county can't do anything about that?
We can't, but the city can. That's why I'm asking you, because they have money set aside for that purpose, is to repave roadways. So if it's within the city limits, then they're responsible for doing that, for taking care of the roadway.
Then I ask this question, from my knowledge. I'm in the county. I don't live in the city limits.
Right.
I can still go to the city and say this to them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Because they have their own governing body. The mayor and the city council govern within the city limits of Riverdale. We can't tell them what to do, just like they don't come into the county and tell us. But we have good working relationship, so we try to work together to get things done.
We're talking about from Roundtree and Roberts going eastward on Roundtree.
Yeah, portions of Roundtree is in the county. So like Commissioner Davis said, if you get in touch with him, he'll make sure, he'll touch bases with the right people to make things happen.
Can I get your car and number?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And just so you know, that there was a delay with prosecuting cases that code enforcement ticketed people, but they are starting back on Thursday hearing cases. So should see some movement on that. Now, somebody could have been ticketed last year or two or three months ago, and because court is not in session, is the reason why you might not have seen any voluntarily or involuntary compliance on part of those citizens.
Thank you.
All right, sir. Gwendolyn Gooden.
Madam Chairman, I mean Madam Clerk, Gwendolyn Gooden, Clayton County. Don't be laughing at me. Chairman Turner, Commissioners, one of your mission statements from your 2022 retreat is as follows. Reflect on what you have achieved and what needs to be changed to succeed with a winning strategy by honest assessment of your stress and weaknesses. I have chosen to highlight the board's weaknesses. Financial accountability. Although we have requested the total charges for the mandatory curbside trash pickup, you still have not provided us with that information. But at the retreat, three of the Commissioners requested a detailed financial report from the Office of Performance Management regarding grant funding. Your priority should be making sure you provide our first responders and judicial system all the financial help they need. We are still being affected by the pandemic. Higher property taxes, inflation sky high, people losing jobs, and some people literally losing the roofs over their head because they have not received the financial help promised. Mandatory cash, mandatory trash pickup should not even be your top five. You are not good stewards. Education. Our educational system needs some work. And the priority, the ability to prioritize teaching a skill that leads to a good-paying job such as plumbers, mechanics, computer techs, et cetera. Everyone is not college material. Communication. I give this board a F. You wonder why God gave us two ears and one mouth? It's because He wanted us to listen more and talk less. One of your Commissioners seems to fail to realize the first rule of effective communication is listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. Dr. Barton Luther King Jr. said, "Our lives begin to end when we become silent about things that matter." The Board of Commissioners 2022 retreat at the Stone Mountain, at Stone Mountain, was on the agenda page, but it was not on the calendar. It should have been on both. The question is, did the Commissioners approve it? Because Commissioner Hamburg has said, "We should be good stewards of the constituents' money." She also has said, "We should spend our money in Clayton County." So why should we spend our money in Clayton County if the Board of Commissioners don't? I looked at some agenda topics from the 2019 Board of Commissioners retreat. Work together, communication, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. The 2022 Board of Commissioners retreat Saturday at Stone Mountain, the topics were refresh, reflect, choices, allocation of appropriate resources. Commissioner Franklin even added specificity of priorities. This board has some important choices to make after Deputy CFO Dennis Johnson explains the cost to keep our first responders. Do you give Superintendent Beasley the additional $10 million he requested in funding? Or do you address, invest in the I-75 corridor group? This board showed support to District Attorney Tasha Mosley for her request for a victims' right advocate. Also Judge Hill's request for additional funding because they are short-staffed and have a backlog of cases. District Attorney Mosley said, "Crime did not stop because of COVID. It got worse." Commissioner Anderson. We spoke about the mandatory trash pickup. Why is having a choice between two trash companies and paying the county an unspecified administrative fee better than having five choices and I don't have to pay you anything? Two is not better than five. Why did three Commissioners approve this without a specific dollar amount? Should we trust you? I don't follow a parked car.
Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Chairman Turner, members of the board, other elected officials, and fellow Clayton County citizens. Topic of conversation today is first responders and pay inadequacy. Let me say exactly who they are. Not just county police, all aspects, refuse control, code enforcement, also county fire personnel, but also the Sheriff's Department and corrections personnel. In these departments, we have a problem, and that problem is the retention of highly-trained and highly-experienced personnel. Why? 911 calling, what is your emergency? In any emergency situation, the first thing you learn in rendering aid is stop the bleeding. We have an excess of bleeding of personnel going to other counties. Treat for shock. Reason for the bleeding of personnel is pay inadequacy. In the 11 metro counties, Clayton County, we are the second from the bottom in pay to these personnel, especially those personnel in the ranks with five to 10 years' experience. Treat for shock. Question. Do we want to pay for protection from our first responders? Or do we want to pay for protection from some mobster, a wannabe gangster? Mandatory trash pickup. People have come up here who talk about the cities and the county, and the cities have mandatory trash pickup, but you can't tell from going to the county to the city or the city to the county because it's trashy. Code enforcement. Ms. Franklin, you want to hire more people at low pay. You keep stroking those people and telling them how good and how important you are, but I have a pussycat that likes to be stroked, but she likes to be fed. And you can't spread it, you can't spread that stroking on bread.
Watch, watch your comments, Mr. Garber.
That's not acceptable.
Watch your comments, though.
Let me help you understand something.
Your time is up, sir.
Do not ever come before this board again and use that language, especially with women that are here. You can disagree with me if you want, and I've always given you the level of respect that you deserve, and I always respect the citizens. But you're not going to use certain terms, and if the chairman's not going to make sure that it's done, I am, because there are other women that serve. It is inappropriate. And I'm going to ask that you all make sure. I'm not here to re-raise you, sir, but that's inappropriate.
And that was inappropriate too. So both, let's calm down, and let's move on. I'll get with you, I'll get with you after the meeting, sir. Thank you. Have a seat, please.
Yes, sir.
All right. Lena, looks like Henderson or Hendrix. Lena Hendrix? Am I saying that right? Mari Gusta.
Mari Gusta, Ellenwood District, Moynihan Incorporated. I come before you tonight to express my gratitude to the three board members who voted yes for us to have mandatory trash. Several of my neighbors are thankful for this decision. Our community has been inundated with litter and the dumping of trash. Mandatory trash is not only the solution, but also it can help to resolve the issue. However, it is going into the right direction, but we want our community to look immaculate. So I humbly come before you to thank Dr. Anderson in leading the charge for us to acquire this initiative. However, like I stated before, this is only one solution. When you go to Alpharetta, Roswell, Duluth, and Fayetteville, you do not see the roads covered with filth and debris. We need to aggressively use our code enforcement department within the county. These businesses need to be cited for having so much trash around their establishment. They need to take charge in the upkeep of their property, just like the homeowners. And if they can't handle this, then they should be cited for the appearance of their establishment. We need to have our roads and our buildings look pristine. If these other communities and counties can make it happen, then we can do it here in Clayton County as well. We deserve more, and our families want more. Our quality of life has to improve. Trash on the ground affects our water supply, our home values, and the county's economic growth. We have to change our mindset when it comes to trash. And as I stand here in front of the board, I ask that you be that change for our community and aggressively handle this concern for my neighbors and myself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that ends the public comment.
The board will now approve the consent agenda.
So motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our first item is addition to both police ambassadors. On behalf of the Police Department, Human Resources requesting to add police ambassador.
Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Ambrose is coming, I would like to say I see someone here from Atlanta Area Tech, and thanks for coming, and thank you all for bringing that back to us regarding that partnership. I really appreciate that.
Ms. Yolanda Buford, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Yes, Ms. Ambrose.
Well, first of all, good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, as well as our Clayton County citizens. Human Resources has four requests for your consideration this evening. LR 6189, on behalf of the Police Department, Human Resources is requesting to add police ambassador, Grade 16, Step 8, salary is 37607, to the hierarchical structure of a police officer classification. There is no budgetary impact, additional positions are not being requested, only a change in the structure. That will make the police ambassador the entry-level classification for that particular group.
Tell us what the job description is. What are they supposed to be doing?
This will be a non-sworn position. The classification will not carry weapons. The classification will step in to assist the officers on lower priority calls and administrative tasks that will free the officers up to do other things. Chief Roberts is here. Chief, did I get that right or anything to add?
Chief Roberts.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. No direct ambles hit the nail on the head. As we battle our vacancy issues with our sworn positions, I see an opportunity here for us to create opportunities for non-sworn personnel, to relieve our sworn personnel of duties that wouldn't require them as gun-toting police officers to be tied up, thus freeing them to fight more priority crimes like burglaries, robberies, homicides. like burglaries, robberies, homicides, unfortunately, things of that nature. So as an example, those tasks that were often called to perform that are really not law enforcement-specific, reports that can be done over the phone or in person that do not involve crimes, extended traffic control measures that do not require sworn personnel, things of that nature.
All right, thank you. All right, so is there a motion to approve?
Uh, yep. Second.
Second, a motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Hambrick. Are there any other questions? Here are none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous, next.
LR sixty-two thirteen. On behalf of Clayton County employees, Human Resources is requesting to add a wellness coordinator. The purpose of the wellness coordinator is to promote, administer, and manage all aspects of our Clayton County Be Well, Be Safe, Be Well Wellness Program. A detailed list of essential duties for this position was attached to this request for your review. The compensation for the wellness coordinator is Grade twenty-five, Step one. Total annual compensation is seventy-three, three nine seven. There is no budgetary impact, funding is available in Human Resources Wellness Budget. Since this is not a county-funded position, potential candidates, if the Board approves it, potential candidates will be informed about the funding upfront in writing upon the candidate who is selected.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here are none, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
Nay.
Three two is what I heard with Commissioners Franklin and Hambrick opposing. It passes, next.
LR sixty-two one four. And I'm going to take my time to read this through to make sure that we have it on the record correctly. The purpose of this request is to restructure the office of the District Attorney to implement a crisp, streamlined, effective structure that meets the needs of the, the current needs of the department and to better serve the citizens. So on behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, Human Resources is requesting the following staffing changes. We want to delete the following classifications. Deputy Chief ADA, Grade thirty-three, Step one. Total compensation, one oh five, four thirty-four. Executive ADA, Grade thirty-five, Step eight. Total compensation, one twenty-five, four thirty-nine. Chief Investigator, Grade thirty-three, Step fourteen. Total annual comp, one twenty-two, five five two. DA Administrative Manager, Grade twenty-six, Step three. Total comp, seventy-eight, four seven six. DA Administrative Assistant Manager, Grade twenty-three, Step three. Total comp, sixty-eight, six eight three. DA Unit Supervisor, Grade thirty, Step four. Total comp, annual comp, ninety-five, one zero three. Senior ADA, Grade twenty-nine, Step three. Total comp, eighty-nine, eight forty-three. Senior ADA, Grade twenty-nine, Step three. Total comp, eighty-nine, eight forty-three. Senior ADA, Grade twenty-nine, Step three. Total comp, eighty-nine, eight forty-three. Senior ADA, Grade twenty-nine, Step three. Total comp, eighty-nine, eight forty-three. Senior ADA, Grade twenty-nine, Step three. Total annual comp, eighty-nine, eight forty-three. To confirm the record in reference to the senior ADA classification, I am requesting to lead, to delete five positions at Grade twenty-nine, Step three. On behalf of the Office of District Attorney, we are requesting to add the following classifications. Prosecution ADA, Grade thirty-two, Step nine. Total annual comp, one ten, fourteen. Prosecution ADA, Grade thirty-two, Step eight. Total annual comp, one oh nine, one forty-three. Investigator three, Grade twenty-eight, Step four. Total annual comp, eighty-six, eight four one. Investigator three, Grade twenty-eight, Step seventeen. Total annual comp, one hundred, seven hundred. Marketing Communications Superintendent, Grade twenty, Step four. Total annual comp, sixty, six zero nine oh three. So that's six zero nine zero three. Senior Felony Legal Support Staff, Grade nineteen, Step four. Total annual comp, fifty-eight, three two seven. Assistant District Attorney, Grade twenty-seven, Step seven. Total comp, eighty-five, eight six four. Assistant District Attorney, Grade twenty-seven, Step seven. Total annual comp, eighty-five, eight six four. Assistant District Attorney, Grade twenty-seven, Step thirteen. Total annual comp is ninety-one, nine oh eight. Make sure I got that right, okay? Assistant District Attorney, Grade twenty-seven, Step nine. Total annual comp, eighty-seven, eight two nine. And District Attorney, Assistant District Attorney, Grade twenty-seven, Step nine. Total annual comp, eighty-seven, eight two nine. To confirm the record in reference to the Assistant District Attorney classification, I am requesting to delete five positions at the various grades and steps I indicated. This request results in a savings of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars for budget year twenty-two, and a savings of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars for BY twenty-three.
Is there anything you'd like to add to that, DA Mosley?
Uh, no, we just asked that you approve it. It's cleaning up these titles. There was executive prosecution, oh, sorry. We're just cleaning up some titles. Like there was an executive assistant district attorney. And when I tell you these titles made no sense, and what, what had dawned on me was just for money purposes, making titles, giving people money. So what we've done is gone in and cleaned it up. Assistant District Attorney, assistant, you know, senior assistant district attorney, one, two. So that way, we know where they're at, everybody's on the trial team level. There's only three deputy chief assistant solicitors. There are two, I've got, actually got two chief, uh, chief assistant district attorneys, but they're state-paid, not county, so y'all don't have to worry about that. But we cleaned up the county side because the, the titles did not match our state side, and we just wanted continuity. And Chief Cox is retiring this Friday, so my heart breaks. But his time, he's, gosh, he's been a law enforcement officer longer than I've been alive, I think. So we, you know, he's done what I needed for him to do since two thousand nineteen. So I don't need two chief investigators. So that's why we're bringing one down to a three. We have one sitting in a unit supervisor that is investigator three. The unit supervisor, we didn't need three unit supervisors, we needed two. But I needed more investigators on the trial line in a major crime. So that's what the restructure is, so that's where there is a savings, and we should see the same savings next year, you know. Yeah, we're just cleaning up.
Okay, thank you. We'll ask questions after we get a motion, or you have something to talk about? All right, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, motion made, second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions? Commissioner Hambrick.
I don't have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
When is the budget process?
We've already, the departments have already received their budget packets, so they're working on that now. The deadline is, I think, next week.
So, this looks like something that belongs in the budget process.
It, it will, but it's also something that is caused, we have to go before the civil service, it had to go before the civil service, so it's a lot of cleanup that we're doing. We just wanted to get it done, because it's something that we've been doing since October, trying to get before you guys since October, so we're four months in. So we're just trying to clean this up at this particular point in time. So it's cleaner going through, I mean.
Well, I, I respect that, Ms. DA, but there are other departments too.
Yes.
That have similar situations.
Understood.
And I really wish this Board would stay with the process.
Yes, ma'am.
That we have. And the budget process is, well, you're already in it, so let's just wait. Well, that's my suggestion, is waiting and, and complete it then, and be fair to all the departments that I'm sure probably have the same situation. But again, I'm only one person, but I, I wish we would stay with the system.
Understood, but as far as, I guess for me, if you could clarify more as far as the fairness is concerned, because what I'm looking at is a savings to the county with this fiscal.
Hopefully, that will happen when the other departments come before us too, that there will be savings.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
Nay.
All right, four one, it passes. Commissioner Hambrick.
Board, this is the last one. LR sixty-two sixteen. On behalf of the Human Resources Team, I am requesting the following classification changes. Delete Office Administrator Leave Coordinator, Grade twenty, Step fifteen. Total annual compensation, sixty-eight, six eight two. Civil Service Administrative Assistant, Grade sixteen, Step one. Total annual compensation, forty-nine, seven three one. And Human Resources Assistant, total annual comp, forty-five, well, hold on, I'm sorry. I've gotten, gotten a little ahead of myself all this, all of this reading today. On behalf of the Human Resources Team, just to make sure that the record is clear and accurate, I am requesting the following classification changes. Delete Office Administrator Leave Coordinator, Grade twenty, Step fifteen. Total annual compensation, sixty-eight, six eight two. Civil Service Administrative Assistant, Grade sixteen, Step one. Total annual compensation, forty-nine, seven thirty-one. And Human Resources Assistant, Grade fourteen, Step one. Total annual compensation is forty-five, seven sixty-one. We are requesting to add Administrative Officer, Grade twenty-five, Step seven. Total annual compensation, seven eight, four seven five. Human Resources Assistant Senior, Grade sixteen, Step eight. Total annual compensation, fifty-three, five forty-three. And part-time Civil Service Administrative Assistant, total compensation, twenty-nine, four four zero. Human Resources is not seeking additional funding. We're taking what we have and reallocating and maximizing what we have. Commissioner Hambrick made a great point about the budget, and I want to say the reason that I'm not addressing this during my budget process, number one, if I did, I wouldn't be able to give the county back twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. That is the savings, if approved, that is the savings that this request will garner for the county. Also, due to staffing changes and other situations within Human Resources, we've had some major changes. This, the changes has negatively impacted two of my employees, and this is the reason that I wanted to move forward with this request at this time.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Well, no question, but same thing. I think this is another item that should wait for the budget process to be completed.
All right, any other questions?
I have another statement, more than a question. I have to agree with, I wish to nominate. Agree with Commissioner Hambrick because of the fact that even though what happens is, it comes before the Board as if it's a savings, it's a savings. And then what we have seen in the past, not necessarily with your division, then you come back through the budgetary process asking for more money, more positions, and we have to keep up with both of it. So I do have to agree with Commissioner Hambrick. I think that we need to make sure that we stick to the budgetary process unless it's an emergency like dealing with police. And to be quite honest with you, I'm looking forward to us really digging in deep during the budgetary process and make sure we're getting our money's worth for what we're doing here.
I'm just going to add that one thing that I love about the proposals is, is a savings. And when you put together the budget, then although it's not a humongous amount of money, it is more money that goes back into the budget that we can reallocate for other purposes. So anytime it's a savings, I'm good with it, but we do need to, and, and also when we do the budget, what we see most of the time is departments asking for additional personnel or asking for pay increases. So again, when it comes to a savings, whether it's prior or during, is always a good thing. Any other questions, comments, statements? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
Nay.
So what was that, was it three two? Two, three, rather? All right, it fails. I'm assuming Commissioner Anderson was a nay, right? Commissioner Franklin was a nay, Commissioner Hambrick was a nay.
Thank you, I appreciate the Board's consideration.
Mr. Chairman, the next one, two, three, four items are board appointments.
All right, first board, board appointment is to the, is to the Ethics Board. Ms. Ashley Wright appointed on the Board of Ethics ends January twenty twenty-two. This appointment is in January each year, begins with District One and continues in numerical order each year. This year's appointment comes from District Two. Commissioner Hambrick.
Well, I know it's January, but I would like to hold this for the first meeting in February.
Madam Clerk, hold it for the first meeting in February. Next board appointment is to the Animal Control Board. After sending the ethic forms, we were notified that Mr. Jim Carter of the Animal Control Board passed in November of twenty twenty-one. Position is vacant. This appointment will begin immediately and will expire March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. This is Chairman's appointment, and I'd like to recommend Myla Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Next board appointment is Library Board. Deitra Poindexter, term will expire February first, twenty twenty-two. The new appointment begins February first, twenty twenty-two, will expire February first, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to move to hold this until the first meeting in February, what is it, February eighth?
Madam Clerk, hold till first meeting in February.
February first?
No, that's, what's, what's the date, first meeting in February? Is it first? Okay. All right, next board appointment is also to the Library Board. Ms. Deborah Jester has resigned from the Library Board. New board, new appointment will begin immediately, expire October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Hambrick.
I would like to hold this for February first meeting.
Madam Clerk, hold till February first.
The next items are planning and zoning. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. Each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten minutes allotted time. When the time runs out, we ask that you immediately cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents shall have no right for rebuttal. When speaking, speak like directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, or name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. First item, BOC twenty-one zero nine dash zero one forty-four. CUP for a new five thousand square foot place of worship and two two thousand square feet learning center buildings.
Good evening Chairman and Board Members. Tyler McSling, representing Planning Staff. The application before you is currently going back through the Zone Advisory Board hearing process, so staff kindly recommends that we hold this to the next Board of Commissioners meeting, which will be February the fifteenth.
February fifteenth.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, how would you like to proceed?
That's fine. We can hold it to the February fifteenth meeting.
All right, is that your motion?
Yes, I'm moving.
All right, I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
The next, next item is BOC twenty-one zero nine dash zero one forty-eight, which is FLUM, a future land use map amendment for low-density residential, LDR to mixed-use MX.
Again, Chairman and Board, uh, the first case here is the future land use map amendment uh, for item, uh, companion items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Item number fifteen, BOC two-one zero nine zero one four eight. For the record, uh, this property is located, um, on Poston Road, Old Poston Road and Terra Boulevard. Uh, staff did receive and reviewed over the request. Um, this application was recommended approval by staff and recommend approval by the Zone Advisory Board. And this is for the future land use map amendment, and I can read the recommendations for sixteen and seventeen if need be, or if not, we can ask the applicant to come up.
All right, we'll get to that. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. I'm not certain if you all would like me to present all the cases at once, or do you want me to just handle one at a time?
It gotta be one at a time.
Okay.
Because each is a public hearing. Would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal?
Sure, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Sure.
All right, set the timer at five. Okay, uh, please proceed, ma'am.
Um, with respect to, um, the proposal, um, we are seeking, this was a DRI project um, that went before the ARC in Greta. Um, we are seeking to rezone the property from RS one eighty and MX to PUD, um, with a future land use amendment from LDR, um, to MIX. I'm gonna flash forward, uh, a little bit here. Um, you can see here the property which is off of Poston Road, um, and Terra Boulevard. We are, um, Poston Road is on, uh, two sides of the property. Um, we are, um, immediately, uh, south of, uh, the county, uh, jail and in an area which we believe, um, is suitable for the proposed development. Um, when we look at, uh, the land use map, you can see here that a large swath of this property already has a land use designation of MX. The rear portion has a, um, land use designation, uh, sorry, I'm looking at the the zoning map. The, um, uh, the land use map actually has LDR, excuse me, um, and we are seeking to, um, have a land use change to MX, which allows for, um, the, uh, proposed mixed-use community, um, that we are proposing for the site. And you can see here that that really makes it consistent, um, with the current zoning, um, on a portion of the property, which is already MX and the balance, which is RS one eighty. Um, so again, we are seeking to, uh, amend the land use, uh, to be consistent in some ways with, um, the anticipated development of the site already, um, and we'll reserve our comments, um, for the next applications as well as any comments, um, in response to any opposition. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, is anyone would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of it? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody oppose? Please come forward, ma'am.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners, Chairman.
State your name for me.
My name is Lana Hendricks. I'm opposed to this development that they're planning to do. We as a people and citizens, we have to think about the future. Yes, it's nice to build homes. What is happening to our animals? What is happening to our air quality? And I spoke this at the other last meeting, that I talked, we, when y'all voted, it was set down, because it was, it was, what, it was six people, it was four to, and it was supposed to be not be coming back up for us. I understand once you voted it, that it was not being acceptable with changing the way it's supposed to be at the last meeting. Now it's back up again for this meeting. We gotta think about the future. Our air quality is falling. What's gonna happen? Our animals are being runned out. And then when they come back into the area, once you develop it, people start complaining about the deers. Oh, we got too much deers around here and stuff. Then we go to talk to killing them. We are depleting our world. They don't see it, but I do. Because it's 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 such a joy when you see the deers down, we, uh, we call it the meadow. When they come down an old postin road, close to the road, and they're there with their family and their kids, them grazing. It it is such a joy. My grandkids love when we drive by there at night and they see the deers. They're looking for the deers. Nobody cares about the animals. All, everybody wants to do is develop here. You just develop up there in love joy. Now you're coming down here to develop again. What we doing? We just killing off our animals. They're getting knocked down. People hitting them, killing them because they have no place to go. Each time we develop, we deplete our animals. And nobody seems to care. What's gonna happen in the next twenty years when we have no trees for our ear that we can't even breathe? We 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 complaining now about the mass? If we keep cutting down these streets, we really ain't gonna got no air to breathe. Nobody's thinking about that. Everybody's concerned about building new homes. Oh, the world is a change. Yes, it's a change, because we're the one changing it as human beings. Instead of keeping it healthy for the younger generation, so that's my concern. My grandkids is from twenty to eight, and I have five. The eight-year-old may not have no air to breathe. The twelve-year-old may not have no air to breathe in the next ten to twenty years when we keep cutting down the trees. We have to sow a concern to these developers about stop cutting down all these trees and building homes. We got enough homes, because you got too much people homeless. Too much people, people losing their homes every day. Fix it up. Rent it out, sell it. Stop cutting down these trees. That's my big concern about our air quality and our animals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to?
I would, sir.
Come forward, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. It's a fine woman there speaking for you. The part I'm against is the attached home, the planned attached homes. The Crest Study told you by these professional doctors that the most income to this county will be single-family homes, not, uh, attached homes. Now, you worried about the budget? You have more people moving in. You have more businesses moving in. Why should you have to raise taxes for the budget? This is what I'm talking about. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Mr. McSlane, if you will, read the, uh, conditions.
This is the future land use map destination request, so it has no conditions.
I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Franklin. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Battle, you got five minutes.
Just stand here for questions. The only thing I would add is that I think that the change to MIX is certainly a suitable transition. Um, we can see that we're, um, when you look at the land use, um, map, that we are in an area where we've got commercial that is surrounding, um, along this corridor. There's no question, this is a commercial corridor in this area. We even have heavy industrial as we're moving, uh, further east on the site. This will allow for a mixed-use project, um, that we believe will provide a suitable transition into the single-family detached product that's behind, um, as our commercial corridor is along the front, um, and we're moving into more single-family homes, um, towards the rear of the site. So with that, again, we would respectfully request approval, um, of the land use change to MIX. Thank you.
Uh, Chair, uh, I want to read for the record that, uh, this case has this companion to cases fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. So for the record, I would like to read those before voting commences.
No, no, just read the header for fifteen.
Header for fifteen, okay. BOC two-one zero nine zero one four eight. This is the future land use map amendment.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I'm actually going to go along with the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Board to approve the, um, the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, of this residential area for the land use to be for mixed use moving forward.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? No, no, ma'am. No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No, no, not for the board, ma'am. No problem. All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous. Next.
The next item is BOC twenty-twelve dash zero zero seven five of PUD, rezoning from RS dash one one eighty, single-family residential to MX, mixed-use district to PUD, planned unit development.
Again, for the record, this is the rezoning component of the three cases fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, BOC two-zero one-two zero zero seven five. Again, this is the planned unit development rezoning component for the two-hundred-and-sixty-two attached town homes, four-hundred-and-thirty-one single-family, and ten acres of commercial tract on one-hundred-and-sixty-seven acres, uh, located on Old Poston, Poston Road and Terra Boulevard. Staff has reviewed over the request and recommended approval, uh, with twelve conditions, and the Zone Advisory Board recommended denial, but I will read those conditions recommended before you all for the record. One, the site shall be developed in general conformity with the detailed development plan dated on December the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Residential and commercial components of the proposed PUD will be subject to the architectural standards of Terra Boulevard overlay and depicted on the site plan before the Board of Commissioners hearing. Number two, all commercial buildings shall be oriented with front facades facing the right-of-way of Terra Boulevard. Commercial buildings shall have primary customer, customer parking in front of the building with fifteen-foot buffer planted between residential and commercial land uses. Condition number three, homes may be constructed with front facade elevations generally consistent with the document titled Walden Park Elevations provided by the applicant on December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and/or include a mixture of brick, shake, board, batten, stacked stone, or fiber cement siding. The home side, the home side and rear elevations may be constructed of fiber cement siding. The use of vinyl sidings is strictly prohibited. Condition number four, each pod of homes within the residential elements of the pod shall have a minimum of four different front facade elevations in order to present design variation within the community. Condition number five, the minimum heated floor area for each attached dwelling unit shall be one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-seven square feet, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four square feet for detached dwellings. Condition number six, all detached homes shall provide a two-car garage, and attached homes shall provide either one-car garage or two-car garages. Please note that before you, there is a mark out of the one-car garage, um, that was mentioned after the Zone Advisory Board meeting, but, um, we can discuss that after the conditions. Condition number seven, a homeowner association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses and structures. Number eight, along the frontage of Terra Boulevard, Poston Road, and Old Poston Road, there shall be twenty-five-feet landscape area with privacy fencing. Condition number nine, detached units shall require a minimum building separation of ten feet between units. Attached unit buildings shall require a minimum building separation of twenty feet between buildings. Condition number ten, no child play areas recreation to be located near the roundabouts. Condition number eleven, the commercial elements of the PUD shall allow land uses permitted within the general business district, provided however pond shops, automotive service and repair, event facilities, nightclubs, and discount stores are prohibited, or shall be prohibited. Condition number twelve, lastly, the proposed walking trail material shall be comprised of mulch, wood chips, crushed stones, and/or recyclable materials. Again, Zack recommended denial of this request. Planning Staff recommend approval of what the conditions listed before you. I can entertain any questions that you may have for staff at this moment.
Ms. Battle?
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. Um, we are extremely excited about.
How many minutes rebuttal?
Oh. Three.
All right, put seven minutes on the timer, please. Proceed on, ma'am.
Um, as previously indicated, we are seeking to rezone this property from RS one eighty and MX to PUD. Um, this is a hundred-and-sixty-seven acre tract with six-hundred-and-eighty-four homes, the mixture, um, of attached and single-family detached homes with, um, community amenities as well as sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial retail space. We believe that this is an exciting opportunity, um, for this corridor, um, as we look to, um, build, um, in a manner which attracts, um, young professionals and others into, uh, this area, um, encouraging them, if they already live within here, to stay, and if they don't, um, to come here as this line is actually, this particular property is actually near, um, some of the MARTA, um, stops and, uh, uh, centers in which, um, will allow for people to actually be able to live here and possibly work, um, throughout, uh, the Clayton County area as well as in other areas, um, within the metro Atlanta region. Um, when we look here again at the land use, which was just approved for change, we are now at, um, MX, and the current land, uh, zoning on this property, again, is both MX and RS one eighty, which means that there was already a contemplation of a commercial component for this particular property mixed with a residential component, um, to the rear. When we look at, um, the overall site plan, um, for the property, um, you can see that at the front end of the project, we have, uh, the commercial component, um, of the project, um, and then, um, along with the townhome, uh, component as we move into the residential component to the rear of the site. We also have a grand, uh, park area, which is also located immediately off of Terra Boulevard as you're moving into, uh, the residential area. We have multiple types of residential product, um, in varying widths, um, throughout the project, as well as the townhome component up on the old Poston roadside, um, which is almost like a separate subdivision coming in to the property. We also have, um, streams and creeks that run through the site, and we are maintaining, uh, the proper buffering, uh, along those edges, and it allows really, um, to have a walkable community with trails as well as community areas throughout. Um, when we look at the commercial components of the project, um, we are looking at a, a nice higher-end type product, um, potentially with, um, uh, rooftop restaurants and other things that will be allowed, um, within this community. Um, on the residential components, you can see some of the, um, homes that, um, we are proposing to be built within the community, um, with mixture of textures, uh, craftsman-style, um, units as long, as well as with the townhome component of the project. Um, when we look at the amenities, we have the large townhome green gathering area, extensive walking trails, the multi, uh, pocket parks, the community lake, the dog parks, um, and the community garden. Uh, I believe we had another, uh, site here that showed the, um, I apologize, the, the color rendering. I'm a little obsessed, because I don't see that right now at this moment, but we'll keep it moving. Um, the community is made up, again, of six separate architecturally distinct communities. Um, Walden Park- distinct communities. Walden Park is a community designed for single, growing families and empty nesters, and cutting-edge architectural designs and colors. Each of the neighborhoods are designed to cater to a specific lifestyle type. Again, the detached homes are between sixteen seventy-four square feet and over three thousand, townhomes between fourteen sixty-seven and eighteen fifty, and the price points will actually start out with the townhomes in the high two hundreds, and the single-family homes will go as high as the mid-five hundreds. In terms of the conditions themselves, we had a couple of changes that we had asked staff and have reviewed with staff. One, we sent an updated site plan dated January seventeenth of twenty-twenty-two, which staff has reviewed. We wanted that updated to accurately reflect the boundaries and the buffer and some additional information that staff had requested on the plans. With regards to number six, the townhomes can have either one or two-car garages, and the reason for that is this board certainly made a change late last year to require all two-car garages. However, this project was submitted in early, we've actually been working on this since the end of twenty-twenty, and throughout twenty-twenty-one with the ARC review. And so we have requested that the one-car garage and two-car garage be left in, as that was what was presented during the DRI process and certainly impacts the overall layout of the site. As far as along, number eight, along Terra Boulevard, Poston Road, we are proposing a twenty-five-foot landscaped area along the entire perimeter of the site, and to remove the privacy fencing, which, the privacy fencing was being proposed really along the edges of the site, along Terra Boulevard, and we didn't feel that that was appropriate in a commercial context. And then finally, I'm hopeful that staff will allow, and I'm actually willing to give up the rest of my time. We do have a video presentation that we would like to show, and I'm not sure if that, there we go. You can give up the rest, I'll concede. I don't know if that'll play within there. Huh?
Does that sound?
I don't think.
Does it have sound?
It does, I guess. Turn that up. I think it's just music. You can see the connectivity and all of the trail factor. This is the grand yard as you're coming in. Sidewalks throughout this community as well.
Those eight-feet sidewalks. What's the width of sidewalk?
Um, I think those-
Along Terra Boulevard.
Yes, along Terra Boulevard, sorry. Eight-feet sidewalks.
Eight feet is required on all of Terra Boulevard.
Yes, correct.
Yes. We worked through that earlier with the government.
All right, so we exhausted all the time. Before anyone to speak in favor of, so again, this is a public hearing, so anyone like to speak in opposition to?
I have a question.
You come forward, ma'am. You'll be next, Mr. Good.
Lorna Hendricks, my question is to the board. When we were here last time, I thought we voted, and when I say we, I'm talking, as a pub, as the commission, as for the people, because I remember, Chairman, some people, when you say who wasn't for it, they didn't sign up to talk. It was six that said no change from what it is now, the kind of landing that it is, to what they want it to be. So are we voting again, y'all voting again for that?
Mr. McSwain. Ma'am, the, the Zonadiversity Board hearing, the last meeting that you were at, that board made a recommendation to approve the future land use map, but they did recommend denial of two other components of the request that the board is hearing tonight.
That, and that was one of the same thing about the change, because first it was three to three, and it told the young lady that was up here speaking, that spoke that same night, she wanted a nee or a yeet. So she-
Ma'am, ma'am.
No, I'm just, I was explaining.
Not to interrupt you, but at this, again, this is a public hearing. For anybody who would like to speak in opposition to, you can feel free to ask your question, Mr. McSwain, after, but this isn't the time to do that, because somebody else might want to speak in opposition to.
Okay, well, I, like I said, I had a question.
Okay. Well, get with him after, he should be able to answer for you.
You know, but, because I don't understand if we, if it was done before, why is it being done again? And it was, I want to know, it was talked about, instead of ten feet between the houses five and five, y'all talk about fifteen or twenty. So is it now ten, or is it going to be fifteen or twenty?
Thank you. Mr. Good?
Actually, do I need to state my name again?
Yes.
Orlando Good in Clayton County. Actually, I'm just following up behind what the young lady said. We had an issue with Panhandle Road, where I questioned the building separations. This one says ten feet. Now, the law may, the state law, county law, whatever, may say you can have ten feet, but for beautification purposes, from what I could see of the video, it looked nice, but buildings that close together just reminds me of Philadelphia, and I don't think that adds to the beautification of the county. It looks like what's behind Walmart, or the street behind Walmart, I forget the name of it. Beautiful houses, but they're stacked on top of each other, so it takes away from the beauty of a house. It can be ten feet, but do we have to abide by ten feet? Or can we just say as a county, we want fifty foot from this, fifteen feet from this point forward? That's my question.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Please come forward to the podium, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
You want, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Please come to the podium.
I have a question.
State your name for us.
I'm Cynthia Little, and I'm a resident of Poston Road. And my question is, is there, let's see, a barrier between the development and property owners that abudid? That's what I wanted to make sure about.
Can you answer that for us?
Yes, ma'am. There is a proposed buffer, a separation between land uses from this development and existing land uses as proposed by the applicant. So there will be a separation.
Okay, we have an idea how much of a distance?
Yes, we do.
Twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am. The applicant is stating, per what their plans are showing, that a twenty-five-foot buffer will be surrounding the entire property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? All right, Ms. Battle, I believe she's waived the rest of her time, so we will go to Commissioner Franklin.
All right. Ms. Cynthia, I would like to get your information afterwards, because I want to make sure that I speak with you, okay? First of all, I want to say that this project is definitely one that is significant for our county when we're talking about bringing live, work, and play areas to our community. We definitely want to do that. I do have a couple of things that I know that I've reviewed, that the zoning, the ZAG Board did have a concern, and, and the one thing that I want to begin with is we did not add the trash service. You know that's got to be on every button, until we can work this part out. We have to have one trash service, and we need to make sure that it does go into effect through the homeowners' association. That's the first thing. Secondly, is on the distance of the houses, because this is a community that's going to have, as requested, a upgraded landscaping, we're going, I'm going to actually look at this and allow it to be twelve feet for the houses up front, but then it has to be twenty, the twenty in the back. So you're talking about twelve to, oh, actually, it's going to be twelve to fifteen, I'm sorry, because that is going to be in line with what the state requires, and we're actually above of what the state is requiring. So twelve to fifteen feet.
You're talking about with regards, I want to make sure-
The distance in between homes.
Okay, the homes we're talking about, because we've got forty-foot homes, forty-foot wide homes, and so the more that we increase-
It's on the sixty-foot lots.
On the sixty-foot lots.
The sixty-foot lots specifically is going to be that-
Twelve to fifteen.
Correct.
Okay.
And we're going to leave that little extra, because you're going to have a plant there. Like, the plants are all going to be planted, like in that video, right?
Okay. So on the sixty-foot lots, we're being required to do a twelve-foot, twelve-to-fifteen-foot building.
Correct, which is above what the state requires, actually. And let me make sure, I do agree that because this process began in twenty-twenty, and it has to go through the ARC and through Greta, we need to not have to go back through that again, since we passed the two-car garage for townhomes. We'll let this one be grandfathered in, but I am requesting that you all make sure that you have adequate additional parking to compensate for that. That's really all the change I have. Other than that, I make a recommendation for approval.
Do you agree with those recommendations that has been added?
Yes.
Okay, are you, Mr. McSwain, state those recommendations again, so we'll make sure you record it on clear.
Do we, can we just do the amended ones, as opposed to going through all of them again?
Yes, just amended ones.
And that was-
Chairman and Board, I will do that, stating that, number one, excuse me, number six-
Number one.
Excuse me, sorry. Number one, we're changing the date.
I'm sorry, January seventeenth.
Okay. For condition number one, we're amending the date to January seventeenth-
Twenty-twenty-two.
For twenty-twenty-two, for the updated site plan reflection for this development.
Got it.
Condition number six had been amended to allow one- and two-car garages.
Correct.
And also for amendment for condition number nine-
Yes.
Twelve-to-fifteen feet separation for these sixty-foot lots.
Correct.
Okay. And also, per the illustrations, we noted that the condition for number eight, a point of clarity for that condition, that instead of saying along frontages of Terra Boulevard and Poston Road, that we will say that the, there will be provided a twenty-five, twenty-five-foot buffer surrounding the perimeter of the property.
Period. And that includes around the houses that are on Old Poston?
Yes, and that is reflected in the plans that was submitted for January seventeenth.
Okay.
And lastly, there's condition, thank you, there's condition number thirteen, was the new condition stating that one trash service to be provided for the HOA for this development.
Correct.
That concludes all of the conditions.
And again, you're good with those conditions?
Yes, sir.
If you would, just restate your motion, Commissioner Franklin.
I make a motion that we approve this recommendation, along with the amended conditions as have been read into record by Mr. Tyler McSwain, and accepted by the representation of the developer and builder.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item is item number seventeen, LS dash twenty-one zero nine dash zero zero thirty-four, preliminary plat approval to construct single-family homes and townhouse.
Again, Chairman and Board, the request number seventeen, LS two one zero nine zero zero three four, preliminary plat approval to construct single-family homes and townhomes. This is the last item for the companion case for Poston Road and Terra Boulevard. Again, this is LS two one zero nine zero zero three four. Staff had recommended approval with the conditions before you. ZAG recommended to deny this request. The previous request that was just voted on had the amended conditions, so we believe that staff will forward over those conditions as well.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five, sixty-two, Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. We would respectfully request approval of this application based upon the same conditions that the rezoning companion case was approved based upon.
No minutes for rebuttal?
Uh, nothing.
All right. Anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor to? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Commissioner Franklin.
All right. Once again, I do recommend approval of this companion case with the amendments that have previously been read into record for the companion piece that was recently approved, and that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
The next item is item number eighteen, BOC twenty-one zero six, that's zero one twenty-seven, which is a future land use map amendment from mixed-use MXD to high-density residential.
Again, Chairman and Board, for the record, again, BOC two one zero six zero one two seven, future land use map amendment. This request is from mixed-use designation to high-density residential for an apartment complex that will be located on Richardson Parkway and Mount Zion Road. Staff did review over the request. Planning and zoning is recommending approval of the future land use map amendment. ZAG recommended approval, again, with no conditions, because this is the land use map amendment. And this is companion to items eighteen and nineteen, are companion items.
Applicants present, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Adam Parker. I live in Atlanta, Georgia. I work for Carter, who is the applicant here tonight, and I'm speaking on behalf of a project in District One.
How many minutes, I'm sorry to cut you off, how many minutes would you like to reserve for a rebuttal shifting?
Five, please.
All right, set the timer for five minutes. Please proceed, sir.
I'm also joined tonight by Joe Severn, the President of Long Engineering. I'm not an engineer, if you ask me questions, and I can't answer them. I will most certainly be deferring to him. Again, my name is Adam Parker, and I work for Carter. Carter's a sixty-four-year-old company headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. We do projects of all kinds. Some images are on the screen. These are all our projects. We do everything from mixed-use projects to office projects, but our bread and butter is high-quality multifamily development. We do projects throughout the Atlanta metro area in Decatur, Sandy- We do projects throughout the Atlanta metro area in Decatur, Sandy Springs. We've recently completed projects at the Atlanta University Center in partnership with the Morehouse School of Medicine. And we've also most recently completed a project in downtown Atlanta in Summerhill by the old Turner Field. That's where our company is headquartered. That's where I work every day. I drove down from there this afternoon. Took me about twenty-five minutes, so we're right up the street. Let's see. Oh, this is flying. One more. There we go. What you're looking at in front of you is a site plan for our proposed development. To orient everyone, this is near Landmark Dodge. It's off of Exit two thirty-one, and it's in between I-75 and Richardson Parkway. What we have on the screen is a market-rate apartment development. We would have ten thirty-unit buildings. It would be complete with a clubhouse, a pool, and amenities such as grilling stations and a dog park. Another amenity that you will see on our site plan is we do have a walking trail that is incorporated. This would be a lit walking trail. And then the last thing I'll draw your attention to on the site plan is in the southeastern corner, we have a one-acre out parcel which we have reserved for future commercial development. We will be coming back to the Board to discuss that in terms of rezoning for a future use, once we have that use finalized. These are renderings of our product. This is, as you can see, a mixture of colors. We have a variety of roof lines, so you're not simply seeing one straight line going across all the roofs. One thing that we found to be very desirable with renters is that ninety percent of these rooms have balconies, and for the ten percent that don't, they actually come with a sunroom. The emphasis here is to let in light. You can also see a lot larger-scale windows that we have as opposed to most market-rate apartments. We've actually put an emphasis on that. On the bottom, you'll see our clubhouse. Our clubhouse is where you would walk in to lease a unit, but it also would have co-working. It would have a gym. It would have kitchen. It would have common areas. If you want to go watch a football game, you could do so in the common area. It would be an amenity for the community. Our last two images that you have up here, these are reflective images of projects that either we have developed or that the general contractor that will be building the project has completed. So what you're looking at is reflective of the quality of work that either Carter develops or reflective of the work that the general contractor would be coming in and performing themselves. And with that, I humbly ask for your support of the future land use amendment from mixed-use to high-density residential, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
I should have an office here. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I usually don't speak when the planning and zoning recommends, has recommendations of denial. But at this time, planning and zoning has approved this project. ZAG has also approved this project. But with my fellow citizens who sit on those boards, I humbly ask them to reconsider this zoning because this area is very commercialized and industrialized. And planning, you've also planned for warehouses along that I-75 and Mount Zion corridor. And now you're going to put people, people there, families there? What are you using to think with? Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Commissioner Anderson?
Good evening. I move that we approve the future land use map amendment from mixed-use to high-density residential.
Is there a second? Okay. Commissioner Franklin, second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is item number nineteen, BOC-2106-F0126, rezoning from MX, mixed-use, to MXI, mixed-use, commercial-industrial district to RM, multifamily district.
Again, Board and the Chair, for the record, this is case BOC-2106-0126, which is the rezoning component of the previous case you just heard. The applicant Carter Acquisitions LLC's request to rezone from mixed-use to MXI, mixed-use commercial-industrial, to RM, multifamily district, to allow three hundred units apartments complex consisting of combined twenty-five and sixteenth acre. Development, the subject properties are located at twenty-four sixty-five Richardson Parkway, twenty-four fifty-six Mount Zion Road, within Jonesboro, Georgia, and known as the parcels mentioned before you, one-two-zero-eight-five-C-A-zero-zero-one and A-zero-zero-two, near the south of Landmark Dodge dealership and adjacent to the I-75, Exit two thirty-one. Planning staff did recommend approval with six conditions. Just to note, I will read those conditions for the record, also noting that the last condition was added by the zoning advisory group. Stating for number one, condition one, the applicant's plans to be construction, of construction of the property shall be in general conformity with the conceptual site plan presented by the applicant Long Engineering dated twelve sixteen twenty-twenty-one. Number two, provide a street light plan to be approved per Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. Condition number three, the building materials may be a combination of any of the following: fiber cement siding or panels, stone, brick, battens, pre-finished painted metal railings, and any other materials accepted and approved by the county during the approval process. Condition number four, variable sidewalk width due to the topography and public improvements are subject to the approval of the Transportation and Development Department. Condition number five, a decorative fence shall be installed along the frontage of Richardson Parkway. And lastly, condition number six, to provide lighting around the walking trail, proposed walking trail materials shall be comprised of mulch, wood chips, crushed stones, or recyclable materials. Those concludes the conditions for this request.
All right, applicant? Would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
No, I'd not like to reserve any time for rebuttal. Again, Adam Parker from Atlanta. I work for Carter. I'm a vice president there. I would go back to the previous presentation that I just walked through, talking about our project at a high level. We are in agreement with these conditions, and they have been factored into our plans for the project. And with that, I would ask for your support for the rezoning to RM, multifamily district.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing, so anybody here would like to speak in favor of? Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed?
You won't quit? I won't quit.
Come forward, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Rex, Georgia. You're making your own beds. You take areas that are already designed for industrial, of which we need. And yes, we need homes, too, but you're mixing the two together, which doesn't work. Commissioner Davis says if it looks bad, smells bad, and tastes bad, it must be bad. And you're setting yourselves up for situations worse than I can present to you. I ask for your denial of this request. Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition to? Commissioner Anderson?
Good evening. I move that we accept the recommendation for requesting the rezoning from mixed-use to, excuse me, from mixed-use to family, a family district, I want to say it right. And I'm just going to say this, it's time for us to move forward, and this is going to be a way for us. We already have enough warehouses in our area, so I'm going to speak for District One. So it's time for us to move forward. This is a way that we can bring in some homes and some apartments that are going to be high-level, high-end apartments, and I would like to move that we vote on this tonight, right now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions?
Can you put with the conditions?
Oh, I'm sorry, and with the conditions.
Ms. Ray?
I was just trying to get your attention to, there was an additional information that came from Fire and Emergency Services.
Okay, well, I thought you had, what's the condition?
Chairman and Board, we did receive notice regarding the Fire Marshal's Office that there were still some concerning issues regarding the layout in regards to fire code, and we do understand that there's been some updates to fire code. So if it's this Board's pleasure, I believe maybe there may be some stipulations that needs to be placed before we move forward regarding this project, that they meet the fire stipulations or let there be a condition stating for that they meet that before coming for permitting.
The applicant, come forth again. Were you clear with Mr. McSwain just outlined, that there's some additional conditions that will be made, need to be made under the fire code? And if we do choose to move forward, that those conditions must be met before proceeding on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. To date the information that we had, we thought that we were fully in compliance with the fire code, but safety is of the utmost importance, and we will coordinate with the municipality appropriately.
How would you like to proceed, Commissioner Anderson?
Again, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we will go on and approve it with all conditions, including what's the fire code for safety.
Got you. Understood. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Yes. What are those issues?
The fire code issues.
Commissioner Davis, we did receive a notice regarding the IFC Chapter two thousand and eighteen, their fire code, and I believe there may have been some issues or unresolved stipulations there. At this time, that's all the information that we have regarding that, but that would have to be rectified with the Fire Marshal's Department.
So is that, that has to be rectified before they're issued the land disturbance permit?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is item number twenty, BOC-2110-0162, it's CUP for cottage food home-based business.
Again, for the record, this is case BOC-2110-0162, conditional use request for cottage food home-based business license. The applicant Ashlyn Adams is requesting a conditional use permit for cottage home-based business consisting of zero-point-eight-eight acres of land, and it's currently zoned RS, single-family, one-eighty. Subject property is located at twenty-four fifty-seven Ash Rose Drive in Jonesboro, Georgia, which is fairly known as parcel zero-six-zero-three-seven-C-B-zero-three-seven, within the Ashley Oaks subdivision. Staff has reviewed over the requests. Staff recommended approval with one condition. The zoning advisory board recommended approval of this one condition as well, and the condition reads, "The requested conditional use is limited to the use by the owner, Ashlyn Adams. A property ownership change will result in the discontinuation of the granted conditional use permit."
Is the applicant present?
Good evening. How are you all? So I am coming to the Board this evening-
State your name for us.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ashlyn Adams, twenty-four fifty-seven Ash Rose Drive, Jonesboro, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. So I am coming to the Board this evening requesting, respectfully requesting, a approval for a conditional use permit for a cottage food license. So I am a home baker, so I'll be specializing in home goods, cakes, pies, any type of pastry. And I just want to start my business and sell out of my home until I can able to get a brick and mortar. So nothing will be picked up from the home. Everything will be delivered. So there won't be any traffic coming in or out of the community, and I believe that is it. And most of my advertisement would be through word of mouth and social media.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber. Coming from a family business in Clayton County for over seventy years, supporting entrepreneurship as a beginning to any big business, and certainly I hope you outgrow your area for a big business. I strongly, strongly support your recommendation to approve, but I'm not going to ask you humbly. I'm going to recommend that you approve her request.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve this request for a home cottage business.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
With the condition, I'm sorry.
And you're in agreeance with the condition, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
You too.
The last item is BOC- twenty, no, it's not. The next item is BOC-2110-0163, map amendment.
Again, for the record, that is BOC-2110-0163, rezoning for the map amendment to allow initiation of the amendment to the official zoning ordinance map, which governs the exercise of zoning power in accordance with Clayton County, Appendix A, zoning. To rezone existing single-family detached subdivisions, zone multifamily, to the new zoning classification, RMTSF, that's multifamily to single-family. In order to resolve unconformity status of single-family detached lots developed in multifamily zoning, ZAG recommended approval. We have Mr. Terrace Petrie, zoning administrator, that will represent staff on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Terrace Redd Petrie, the planning and zoning administrator. So this is phase two of a project that this Board had requested staff to do. The first phase was, was the text amendment to create this new zoning district that was proved under twenty-twenty-one dash two-four-eight on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And so this phase two is to rezone one-hundred-and-forty-one pages of parcels that staff had identified that needed to be rezoned to this new RMTSF zoning district to make all the detached single-family homes conforming as far as the zoning ordinance goes. And if there's any further questions?
Okay. This is, again, a public hearing. Anyone here would like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber. Mr. Chairman, how can I speak in favor of or denial of if I don't completely understand the situation? And I would humbly- And I would humbly ask this gentleman to-
Well, you need to address, you need to address your questions to this-
I would humbly ask you, the Commissioners, to ask this gentleman to please explain it in layman's terms.
Come back to the podium and do just that, and just provide a little more clarity in reference to what we're being asked to approve.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Sir. 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 Mr. Garber, don't interrupt him. Go ahead, sir.
So this request is to allow the single-family detached homes that are currently in the residential multifamily zoning district to be conforming, or if something happens to the home, it, this would allow that home to be reconstructed. And so that's the, basically, the purpose of this, this rezoning request.
When you say reconstruct, you mean rebuilt, or just toward, rebuilt?
Yes, sir.
Could not just renovate it, it would have to be totally rebuilt?
Correct. If, if the house is a hundred percent demolished, then this would allow that single-family detached home to be built again.
Yeah, this came before us, is this the, right, this is what's going on, right, and, and, well, and all over the county, and we thought it was just in District Two, where a home was burned down, and the person could not rebuild because they found out they were in multifamily instead of single-family dwelling. So that this is correcting that problem for not only that subdivision, but throughout the county.
It's countywide, that's correct, that's correct. Okay, anybody else like to speak?
Excuse me, clarification again, please.
Commissioner Hambrick, you seem to have a grasp on, and I was being interrupted by the courtesy of the policeman to stand away, and I missed some things. So let me tell you what I understand. This zoning is gonna allow, in a subdivision where a house has burned down, to be rebuilt as a single-family housing again, or a multifamily housing again?
As a single-family house. So it won't- I don't think it has to be in a subdivision, does it have to be in a subdivision? It does not have to be in a subdivision, but if it's in an area.
So, Mr. Garber, if, if a house been located in its original state for twenty years, and the zoning has changed, what this does- The zoning has changed over the years, but somebody's, that house has been there for fifty years.
Yes.
Then if the house burns down and the zoning has changed, then that house would not be able to be rebuilt, because the zoning has changed. So what it, what this does is allow that house to be rebuilt as a single detached house or family home.
But it would not, it would not interrupt the consistency of the neighborhood, is that what you're telling me?
That's correct, that is correct. Mr. Reed, you have something?
Let me just also add, it's not just limited to when houses are burned down, because the code does deal with that situation. This is really more, this is correcting an issue that is, that occurred where the RM zoning classification at one point allowed single-family homes. At one, then eventually RM, that zoning classification took out single-family homes as authorized use. So people who needed to do additions to their homes, or things that they would normally be able to do, because they were properly zoned at the time they were built, because they became non-conforming, they could not change anything related to their house. So what this does is correct that, allow them to be able to use their house in the way they would, they were able to use it at the time they purchased it. It's not just limited to if the house burns down. It corrects that particular, and it's only for existing homes that were already zoned RM at the time, at the time they were built. So this is not something that someone can rezone to RMTSF, this is correcting that one era.
What's TSF, sir?
That's the zoning classification.
He wanna know what it means, what's that?
Tyler can, it's just called, that's what it's called, RMTSF. It may have some acronym for it, but I don't wanna speculate on that, that's just the-
So nobody knows.
Multifamily to single-family, RMTSF.
And as long as it doesn't interrupt the consistency of the existing neighborhood, then I'm in favor of this zoning change. Thank you.
Chairman and Board, for point of clarity, just as a point of the record, that this is not an initiation, this is the rezoning to follow the text amendment that was approved.
Gotcha. All right, we were on, anybody in opposition? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve BLC two-one-one-zero-dash-zero-one-six-three map amendment.
Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, are there any additional questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item is discussion on law enforcement and EMS pay adjustments.
Mr. Dennis. Ms. Bevins.
Good evening, Commissioners, I was asked to present some options that we previously discussed about potential solutions to some of the funding for the public safety turnover issue that we've had, you know, over the past several years. So with that, so what I wanted to do first is just to remind you kind of where we've come from. If you look at this, the history here, we have for several years, from the years two-thousand four to two-thousand twelve, there were no increases for anyone. If you look, the first COLA was in two thousand fifteen, and if you look in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, there were some efforts to address the issues in public safety by providing an additional amount, both a three percent COLA and a two and a half for those additional folks in the public safety area. And then since two thousand nineteen, the increases across the board for all departments, including public safety, have been merit and utilizing the banded merit system. So in some cases, many of the positions are limited to the amount of increase that they can receive. So what we've done is, part of the enhancement overview is that we've broken it down to a few groups. The first, what we're gonna talk about is sworn first responders, and those are individuals that basically answer calls and go directly to the public. This would be police, fire, EMS, folks, the direct contact with the public as they're brought out from E-nine-one-one, as they're called from E-nine-one-one. The next group is sworn officers, the remaining group, and that would include the sheriff and correction officers, okay? And then the last group is county staff, all other departments or those administrative that don't fall into the other two categories. As part of this proposal, I think I mentioned it to you earlier, we're gonna look at this as a COLA, as a cost of living increase, not only because of the high inflationary times, but the consequences that we've learned from the past of if we don't adjust our scale using a COLA, in other words, a COLA is where we adjust the scale upward, we're gonna run into problems as there is turnover. We wanna be able to replace the new hire at the higher, at a higher grade and step as we would if it were just replacing the person maybe who had moved up over the years. Now, one of the things we're really trying to do is to look at this potentially to begin as early as May of this year, in twenty-two, twenty-two, with just the first responders. So we would be able to, and I'll go into the detail about each layer and the costs and things like that, but there is that potential for us to, based on some ARPA funding that we have, that would allow us to do that, that's separate from some of the other funding that we'd be talking about. As you can see here, we've done an enormous amount of calculations, and we've tried to come across every iteration that makes sense for us, all the way up to what was requested by the chief, and that was twenty-three percent, I think, if you recall in his last presentation, he said that was kind of where he thought that would put us in a, in a better, in a significantly better situation, if not in a premium situation. So what we've done is we've grouped together the different entities, police, EMS, and then, and those funds come out of the general fund. So those, those are coming out of our normal general fund, whereas the fire, they would come out of the fire fund. So there's gonna be two funding areas for this proposal, for the first responders. And then if you look forward, you can see that both the sheriff and corrections would also come out of the general fund, they would be non, really, public safety non-first responders. And so if you look at across the cost structure, what we've, what's been provided by the departments, where we applied benefits to them, where we calculated all these different iterations, to do what was requested would provide an increase of over eighteen and a half million dollars per year from now until all the way out into the future. Again, when you look at it roughly for a one percent, it's about eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, almost up to a million, ten percent's about eight-point-one million, and twenty percent's about sixteen-point-two. Now, this calculation does not include any of the other staff in the county and other departments at this point. Questions on any of the numbers or anything at this point?
I have a question.
Sure.
And it goes back to what I spoke to previously, and I think that we need to be very careful with this portion of it, because as we know, I know that you separated out the categories, and I wanna take care of fire, EMS, and police, but you cannot definitely separate out deputies, because we are one of the few counties that still has police and a sheriff's office.
Understood.
It's the constitutional, it's actually constituted by the state, that actually those departments all have to respond. So you separating out the sheriff's office from that, I don't think that that's a good idea, and that's just my take on it.
I gotcha.
Because of the fact that when things go down, you're looking at both of them responding. I don't know how we're gonna carve them out.
Yeah, may I respond to that?
Oh, please. Commissioner Hamrick.
Okay. I think you have explained it very well, first responders. If I dial nine-one-one, I'm gonna get either police or fire. I call that my first responders, and I think that's what we were inquiring about when we asked for this information. And I understand the sheriff and all that, which takes care of the courthouse and serve warrants and that kind of thing, the, the second responders, but if we're talking about our first responders, that's who we gonna get when we dial nine-one-one.
Well, let me say this, the nine-one-one calls go out to the police department, goes out to the fire department, but nothing keeps the deputy sheriffs from responding as well. My days of policing, deputy sheriff sometime beat us to the calls. So, yeah, I can see from Commissioner Hamrick, oh, not Hamrick, I'm sorry, Commissioner Franklin's point, about having them as, I would say quasi-first responders, although the call does not go out to them, nothing keeps them or precludes them from, from going or responding to that call.
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna piggyback on what you said, I think that the definition, you base it upon our operations in this county, but deputies are sworn responders, they have to respond, and we don't understand that. Yes, it is, throughout the state of Georgia, they must respond. So if they have a call, and there's something going on, and they choose not to do anything, then they're held responsible. There are several cases where there were deputies' presence throughout the states, and something happened, and they didn't respond. So we have to be accurate with that, we can't base it upon our, what has happened in the past with us, they are sworn responders, they're in the same risk class. I don't agree with separating those out, that is dangerous.
And, and I believe what she's speaking on is that if they are in the present, in the vicinity of where a crime exists, the failure for them to act-
Yeah.
Correct. Has liable repercussions to it.
And they have to back up, too, so don't separate them out, that's dangerous.
But they're not required to respond, correct?
That is not true.
They're not required to respond-
Right, and they do in our group, right.
But if they're in the area, now if they get a call, now, if they get a call, because there has been times when the police are macked up, and somebody, the supervisor, my experience has been, hey, CFSO is available, then they would respond.
Correct.
So in that same, same vein, I, I can, I can agree with adding them to the first responders.
Well, what that, what this breakout allows us to do is to recalculate and make changes to the calculation, so it's why we broke each area out, we have the capability to move anybody within any categories as you got, as you all see fit. So certainly we'll consider any changes that you choose to make.
Can I ask a question?
But what I wanted to do is capture all the different considerations.
Attorney Reed, what is the sheriff's primary responsibility, and by law, what is their responsibility as far as responding?
They have, they are the law enforcement agency for the state. In other words, they are elected official that's appointed by the state, they have several constitutional as well as statutory duties to respond. The reason why the county is one of the few is that counties had at one point the opportunity or the authority to create a police department. That didn't supplant the sheriff's law enforcement obligations, but it just allowed the county to create a department. If the count, now, you have to jump through a lot of hoops to actually create a depart, a police department within a, a county, to get a referendum and the whole stuff, but, but the, the county's police department did not take away the sheriff's legal obligations as the law enforcement officer for the state, and you'll find as a majority, as I said, of counties have used their sheriff as their primary law enforcement agency.
If, if, I'm sorry to mean to step on his toes, because I do actually have the OCG law right here that I could read to if you need it.
Oh, well, I mean, you can.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. So as you see here, we've, we've gone through and calculated all the different iterations, or, you know, that different scenarios, options, and again, those can all be changed. So as, as we go forward, what we've done is make a recommendation for discussion purposes here tonight, that would, for, for the category I've identified as first responders, not necessarily what you would like to refer to, it's ten percent COLA on, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, or we could look at five percent on the thirtieth of, of April, which is just the start of the new pay period for May, so about one day, and then five percent for the new budget year, starting on the new budget year. We will budget it all, the entire ten percent would be budgeted in the new fiscal year, but we would start it, and that amount, as it's currently laid out, would be about four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand additional dollars to do those two months for the first responder group. The second sworn remaining public safety officers would be getting five percent as of seven-one of twenty-two. And then as part of that, as part of your request, Chairman, to calculate a COLA for all employees, because the feedback we're getting is, everybody is seeing significant difficulties in filling positions, and, and the, the number of vacant position far exceeds anything I've seen in my time here.
And it's just not with us, as many counties and cities experiencing the same, and I definitely wanna make sure that the other county employees are considered within that as well.
Yeah, we talk regularly to other counties, and they're all expressing exactly the same condition, that it's difficult to recruit and difficult to retrain, they're much more, there's much more movement involved in employees today. So as I go forward with that, the first responder calculation cost would be five-point-nine-million dollars, five-million-nine-hundred-eighty-thousand. The sworn remaining, that's the two groups that I identified- The sworn remaining, that's the two groups that I identified earlier, that would be one million sixty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-four. And then the county staff would be two million four hundred and ten thousand dollars for a total of roughly nine, almost nine point five million dollars. Of those funds, seven point four, almost seven and a half million come from the general fund, and the remaining one million, almost two million dollars, one million nine ninety-two would come from the fire fund. So again, there's different, there's different blocks of funding, and I just want to make sure we're clear that not all of this would go to the general fund. So the funding sources we looked at are three, and these are three that are pretty, we feel comfortable that we'll be able to sustain regardless of the circumstances, at least to start this process. I have, there are ten million dollars of ARPA funding that the county, due to the change in the legislation that recently was enacted, that the county can utilize basically ten million dollars, almost in a manner that we see fit to benefit the county. I think this falls under that category. If you recall in the presentation that I did on August 3rd, eight point six million of it, eight million six hundred and thirty thousand, three thirty-six, was undesignated. We haven't had, found a purpose for that out of the second payment, which we expect to get in May. Now, there's also an amount that I think is available, and I'm certain is available, and that amount is the one million three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four, that I will have that additional money that the estimate for premium pay is going to be less than we have actually paid out. So we do expect to have some additional funding to maximize the ten million dollars that we will, that the legislation allows us to do. So that would be one of the funding sources. The next funding source we would look at would be ten million of the DCA grant that we received for the jet fuel, thank you, for the jet fuel elimination. And so again, that's fund balance, that's the jet fuel, but we'll start to, in small manageable increments, utilize some of that funding, not to the point where it destroys our financial backbone, but where we're able to utilize it to help our public safety officers. The last area I'm looking at is obviously when you have a lot of vacant positions, you underspend your salaries, and that's an area where we feel that we can use three to three point three million per year going forward for several years to help fund that. So what I'm looking at is roughly the ten million, almost ten million dollars moving forward would be funded at least for three years. So it wouldn't involve, it wouldn't involve any other revenue sources at this time to do this. And so we feel that even if we had some hiccups, by spreading the risk over three different funding sources, we wouldn't have anything that would disrupt us doing that for at least the next three years before we really needed to maybe take a second look at it.
After three years?
What's that?
After.
After three years? We're going to get into the discussion, right? So a couple of things, let me get to the next steps, and I'll talk to you about some different funding ideas. So the first thing we're looking at is this would be a COLA early May for the first responders. Once the budget is approved, I really think then we're going to be looking at mid-year budgets. We're going to be looking at saying, what do we know we're not going to spend? What could, you know, what large items have come or not come? And what can we not spend money on in order to continue to work away at this problem? Obviously, I can't do 23 percent to start out of the gate. We got this way over time, but I think we're trying to get almost halfway there with the first group, the first out of the door increase to public safety, and then methodically really try to look at the mid-year point to say, what else could we do to continue to move this forward to make us comparable? And then also, another thing we've looked at, we've tossed around this a little bit, is a credit for, which is equal to the cost of an individual insurance policy, so they would get a credit. So if I'm a single person and I select one of the two, you know, plans, it wouldn't cost me anything. Essentially, that money would stay in my paycheck. While it doesn't inflate the salary range, it's a direct in-your-pocket benefit that I think many, many folks would welcome, and I know other jurisdictions are doing that as well. So without, when you do things, there are certain impacts that happen that maybe sometimes are unintended, but the first one I really want to warn you about, because it's surprising how it can happen, the pension may require additional contributions. And Commissioner, you're always aware, you've worked with actuaries before, right? And you know, they're very conservative, and these increases are beyond what we typically put into our assumptions for the pension calculation. So I can anticipate that there may be some additional contributions, maybe not right away, but later where there may be additional funding for us to put forward as a result of this process that we're going through. It's not the entire workforce, but it is a good part of our workforce, and it could have that impact on the actuarial calculation for us, because it assumes that a person's on board and they're only going to get so much of a percentage raise all the way out. This is going to kind of change that assumption a bit, and we may see it in a year or two come back and affect the need to have an additional contribution. I think ARPA will run out, so exactly the thing we're talking about is that ARPA will be gone, and we will utilize whatever funding there we are allowed to and take advantage of it while we have it. So, but we are going to look for some other sources, but we, that will buy us time to not have to have a devastated police force and fire and our public safety folks. Again, we're relying on a small amount of fund balance each year, maybe 3 percent, something that we can tolerate over time. And it's important that this would be the kind of expenditure while we couldn't do the entire amount, we couldn't do, you know, all the dollars out of fund balance, our ability to leverage that and spread it over several sources is important for us. The next one, it's going to create the need for some additional revenue sources. We're going to have to, one is the foundation. We've talked about that. I know we're going to be looking at what that can do to help offset other costs in the general fund to allow us to do things in the public safety arena. The other one is kind of a different one that we've been tossing around internally, but we really haven't done, and that's a separate public safety millage rate. And it's not an additional one. It's one where you, you take the total and you compute what the public safety portion would be. So then in the future, if you just wanted to address the public safety side, you could do that, and the dollars would be, would be lower. If you look at Gwinnett County, some counties have very many, like, as citizens like parks and recreation, they may say, I'm willing to pay a tenth of a mil more to have the facilities open longer. So it gives you the flexibility to potentially do something like that down the road. I don't think it's an easy, it's an easy thing to do. I think there's a lot involved in that process. It would be a several-year process. But when you do that, you then break out those costs, you know what your costs are, and you know that if you're going to affect public safety, you're going to directly affect that, that portion of the, of the millage, that it's going to be dedicated toward the public safety organization. And then again, you know, we talked about this, but I'm going to reiterate it, the growth of new positions, we can't keep adding to the problem going forward. We're going to have to be very selective in what we do. We're going to have to be looking at, you know, there's going to come times when we're going to have new facilities that we are going to have to man, but we're going to have to be very cautious with that. Really look at the efficiency and look at what we're currently doing and how we can enhance and make that better, so that we're maybe not having to add as many people moving forward. So, make sure I didn't skip one here. So what I did was I, we took the, we took the proposal for both the police and the fire, and it's kind of a before and after picture. I wish I had a pointer, I think this thing does have a pointer, but is it the top? Oh, yeah, look at that. So right here, you will see right on the end, second from the end, that's Clayton County, right? And this was provided by Chief Roberts' staff earlier, and you can see what the certified was at forty-three, six, forty-seven, and the first, the trainees or the recruits were at forty-one, five, thirty-two. After the increase, now we would be here, and our certified would be forty-eight, oh one, two, and our recruits would be forty-five, six, eighty-five. So this is after the 10 percent increase. For fire, again, we're looking at fire service, and it's really hard for me to see without my glasses, but you can see right here, we were at fifty-three, two, forty-five, and now it's at fifty-eight, five, sixty-nine. So you can see that where there was a gap between us and maybe some other entities, that gap on the graph on the right has narrowed in terms of us being on the bottom. And then right here, paramedics, again, same scenario. In this scenario, the paramedic, it's kind of, it's kind of swapped. We are here now. It's, looks like they made this one in red as opposed to in blue like it was in the first graph. So we've moved up there even in that area as well. The whole point of all this is to systemically come up with a plan that doesn't devastate the financial resources of the county, still allows us to make progress moving forward, but also allows us to address this area not just once. This is something we're going to have to look at, have to be creative about, look at ways to avoid expenses, to minimize costs in order to take those funds, because when you do it, it's from here on out. It's every year. And so I want to be careful that I was very, as much as my heart wanted to do something for our public safety folks, to say, here you go. I wouldn't be responsible if I didn't come here and try to do it in a way that I think everybody could tolerate, that we could do it step by step by step, and that, you know, we had some other options available to us. As they come forward, we're going to certainly try to continue to do that. Questions, comments?
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Johnson or Miss Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
So the total, the total for all is what?
For this first phase?
Correct.
For all three entities that we're doing is about nine point four million dollars.
Okay, does that contemplate the SO being in there as well?
What's that?
The sheriff's department, does that?
Add eight hundred and forty-one thousand to that to get that number.
If we add, if we add the sheriff's office to be another 5 percent, it would take it the total to ten million, two ninety-three, six, sixty-nine.
Eight hundred and forty-one more thousand to that number.
And so the first 10 million will be coming from ARPA for three years?
I'm going to layer, yes.
Okay. And the rest will be coming from general fund?
From fund balance?
Three parts of money.
Right.
It's going to be coming from three different areas each year for three years.
Okay.
So it'd be ARPA from, it's a combination of the three.
And what's our current fund balance?
We ended the year on our to one oh two, but that's not going to, shouldn't change. I mean, what we presented Saturday at the retreat is a hundred and two million.
One oh two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we use 10 million of that over the next two years, that'll get us down to ninety-two, unless it could go up during the next three years as we, as our revenues and expenditures come in. If we can, we watch how we're spending, and we spend less than what we get in, then our fund balance would go up. So if we get more revenue in than what we spend, that adds to the fund balance.
And isn't there a level that when our fund balance reaches, that it could begin to affect our rating?
If it gets too low, but we talked at the retreat on setting either two or three months level of operating reserves, and we would be okay at that.
So that...
Then Dennis and I prefer three. Right now it's at two.
So that, I'm sorry, finish.
No, that's okay. We prefer to have three months.
Okay, so that two-low number is?
Eighteen times three is what?
So it's fifty-six.
Yeah, fifty, about half of it.
Fifty-six, sixty million dollars.
Fifty-four. Okay. So we're looking good so far. So worst-case scenario, we don't have ARPA, our fund balance has gone down, or then what?
That's just two. What was the third one? Was that the?
Frozen positions.
Frozen positions.
Right, vacant laps. We use laps to balance our budget all the time, because, you know, we have so many more positions, yet they're never filled. So it's kind of like we're inflating our budget to, to include all the positions when we really don't, because we know that given the circumstances, there's, that we're never going to fill all those positions in almost, across the board. The list is long. As part of this exercise, I had my staff put together three-year history on vacant positions, ones that have been vacant for three years. And that's going to merit a conversation where we may permanently make some of those that would then provide those savings. What I think this does is it buys us time to do the right things and to look slowly, to look at other revenue sources, okay? We've got to be creative. The other thing is this assumes no millage rate increase.
Okay.
Okay? I don't, as I'm sitting right now, I don't know what the digest is. I won't know that number for another month or so to know if we'll see an increase in the tax dollars. The other side of it is, we're looking at, you know, lost, we are looking at lost negotiations this year, so we always have to be cognizant of the risk of different things that can affect our revenues.
Excuse me, Dennis, that was a mention of the, the fuel tax, I think. The money coming right...
Right, that's the DCA grant fund balance. Basically, we never used it to balance our budget in those days, so we still have that money. So we're looking to utilize that money, very small increments, 3 percent or in that range, maybe slightly less, over the...
How much is that?
That was roughly like 18 million. We had to pay some to the cities. Don't forget, we had to give away a little bit of that, so it was not quite that, but...
Can we hold back the portion to the cities that we provide fire to? We do to a lot of them.
That was part of the agreement, that was an intergovernmental agreement where we had to, in the proportion of lost revenues and how they were allocated, we had to do it that way.
Okay.
Here's an issue that I do want to address, and it's more or less utilizing both chiefs' expertise on what's needed in those departments. We're talking about limiting the growth for those first responders, but we're sitting up here basically approving, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we finished.
Basically making recommendations for growth. I think we have to just begin to keep that in mind. What do both chiefs think, think the need is going to be in those departments? And that's not a financial question, that's more of an operational question.
Correct.
Commissioner Davis, what you talked about in the presentation, where we spoke to limiting on new positions?
No, yeah, when he just said that.
Yeah, that was for all other departments, not necessarily the public safety. It was for other departments requesting, right, to use recreation centers. If you bought on a new recreation center, of course, we would have to fill those new positions, but he's referring to adding new positions to departments as we're getting ready to go through the budget process now. We often have a lot of people ask for new positions, so we need to limit those numbers that we add if they are totally not necessary. And really, you know, dig down and look and see, is this something that you really need, or can you reallocate your resources that you have with your, with your employees? Look at your processes and see, okay, are there other things that we can do differently where we can utilize the staff that we have rather than adding a new position?
Also, Commissioner, I'm sorry, as part of my plan and detail, what we do is while we, if a position's vacant, they can hire it, the public safety can hire, we don't place a restriction on them. The issue has been, they can't hire it. They are, there are large numbers of vacant positions that they have, and they're just hoping they can get to the point where they can fill all those positions. But we're not looking to cut them or restrict them at that point in time, because we don't need to add them new positions, we just need to help them fill the ones they already have allocated, which is a large number.
And, because I just think this might be a time, as good a time as ever, the same way Ms. Ambles and DA Mosley came, more or less with the restructure and the losing of certain positions and the adding of certain positions, this might be a perfect time for that exercise to take place within those as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, both chiefs have, over time, really looked at their organizations, and, you know, we'll listen and calculate and provide support to them any way that they see fit to do that.
I just have, I have a question, additional question here. So with the fire fund, does that mean they're going to have to reduce their operating expenses so that they can cover the increments?
I think where they're at is I am going to apply some of the ARPA money to their fund, but they're in a, they're in a good position for now. If you recall, over the past several years, they've been... If you recall, over the past several years, they've been doing an enormous amount of funding their own construction. They have paid for the station, if you remember in 18, and all the stations, the mold remediation, that was all paid for out of their own fund balance. So they are collecting their share of revenues, and this, the, the thought processes here is that they will be able to contribute this cost, at least initially for, for a portion of the time. There, you know, we've lowered their net millage and, over the past couple of years to contribute to the lowering of the millage rate for all of the citizens. So we're going to have to be careful to take a look at that, but they have absorbed a lot of costs, and those costs may be going away from some of the building and construction. Again, they have a fire station they have to build, right? Station, is it 15 that, if we ever get it built? But it's certainly, we don't want to, we don't want to overburden them, but I think they're in a position in talking with, with Chief Merkison that there's a lot of that that we can do, and we've, we've done some preliminary number looking, and I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Another question. So you said that this is a start, because looking at this, it still leaves us at the bottom. I get it. We got to make sure that we do it, but fiscally responsibly, so I get that. But looking at all of this, if we were to get this going this evening, including all sworn personnel, as we discussed earlier, based upon the law, would, how long do you anticipate it would take for us to get other funding opportunities in place, such as impact fees? Because we just approved a lot even tonight. A lot of projects were approved, and that's going to be an impact on our county. We're going to get that increase in taxes, yeah, but those impact fees would have been very helpful.
I guess I'm looking for the person who's going to bring that legislation forward. It's something that, you know, I think maybe.
I don't mind bringing it forward, but staff has to be able to make sure their calculations with it. So we just need to make sure that you all are coordinating between community development and everybody involved.
Well, certainly.
Because we're going to be a hotbed for development. We know that between the districts, but if we don't make sure that we're taking care of the men and women that are taking care of us during this growth, then we're doing our citizens a disservice.
I know that the growth is even challenging. I've been reaching out to the Tax Assessor's Office a bit to try to get, to, you know, get a little bit of a preliminary look at the digest, because in our impression, we're seeing an enormous amount of construction, but I don't know yet how it translates into the digest, where we don't raise our taxes, or the millage rate stays the same or goes down, and yet we generate more because it's true, genuine growth. I just don't know that number yet. So I would imagine during the budget process, sometime, if we look at the late February, I'll get the first one, I'll get a little better number probably in March, and I typically will project the payroll for the entire county sometime during the month of March. Once we have that, I've got the, the vast majority of costs, and I go through every line two and three times for revenues. So if I see something, then I'm going to say, this might be an opportunity for us at this point. But what I haven't seen is the, the submissions aren't due till next week, and I haven't really had a flavor for the cost increases that we're seeing everywhere.
Okay.
In all the functions and things that are having to do, and I just, I, I just know in, you know, the business world and talking to colleagues at other, other counties, they're all starting to really see it weigh in now. It's starting to come in all the things we do. It's kind of not any one big one, but it's almost in everything that we do. So I also want to be cautious to make sure that we can account for that as well, but if we, if we find something that gives us the opportunity to take advantage of the situation, we're going to take advantage of it.
So that's even if, like, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair said earlier, even during the budgetary process itself, something may pop up. We may find some extra airplanes.
Yeah.
Like last time. Just saying. So, you know, I'm ready to make a recommendation just for the start, because I'm, I'm, I am with Madam Vice Chair at this point. We need to start somewhere, stop putting it off. I love the fact that you said it doesn't require a millage increase. We're using the 18 million, praise the Lord, that I've been talking about that's been sitting there that would have been used. At least it would get us started. I will say to both chiefs that are present, it still does not put us at the 23% the way they need to be, but I think for this evening, I think we need to make a recommendation, including the other sworn officers by constitutional law, that we go ahead and get going tonight on the 10% to get it passed and move forward based upon your schedule.
Let me say this, that I really appreciate Ms. Bivvis and Mr. Johnson, y'all putting together a plan and making a recommendation that, as Commissioner Franklin just said, does not impact the millage rate or have a significant impact on our fund balance. But at the same time, let's not know, but I love the plan, I love the option that you posed to us, and I especially like the fact that there, you mentioned that 3% for the other employees, because we're, they're not forgotten. We're going to make sure that we do all that we can for them as well. We do have 2,600 employees, but of course, because of the hardship we are seeing within our public safety arena is the reason why we have to address this. This is an immediate need that needs to be truly addressed. So whatever the board's will will be, but I definitely want to see the, just, just my, my one vote. So let me dispose it like this.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, you made the motion. I thought she made it.
Yes. No, she, well, I didn't hear her say make a motion.
I did, actually.
Yeah, she made the motion.
Okay. Can I second? Can you make a motion stating that you said specifically adding SO to the?
I did say that, actually.
Can we, can I want some clarification? So it's going to be the 10% for the first responders, which includes the Sheriff's Office.
Now, right.
And then the 5% for the remaining sworn officers and corrections.
Correct. That's my recommendation for this evening.
And the 3% are we?
And the 3% will come with the budget.
With the budgetary process.
The budgetary process.
Correct.
And when will it start? Is it the 430 and 5 and 7-1, or all on 7-1?
Is it recommended what he proposed, or what?
It's in this.
It's an option that I proposed.
He said option, one option was 4-1, and the other was 7-1.
I think we need to go ahead and start with 430. We don't need to keep putting it off if funds are sitting there for the way you have it proposed.
Yes.
I do want to make sure that it's known that my motion is only given that this is a starting point, nowhere near where we need to be, and we'll, I'm going to go out and see if I can hold out a can and get us some more money, just a starting point.
And I second the motion.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you again for your recommendation. Mr. Reed?
I would love to say we don't have an executive session, but we do, on real estate and litigation.
I'll make a motion going to executive session for real estate.
I second it.
Can you let me finish, please? For real estate and legislation. Is there a second?
Second.
What did I say?
You said legislation.
Man, y'all, y'all got me all shot. All right, let me try this again. Real estate and litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, is there a motion to reconvene? So move some. I'll second the motion, and those in favor, aye? Oppose? It's unanimous, Mr. Reed.
All right, we're taking together?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first is a settlement agreement in the matter of William Mann versus Henry Adrian Joseph et al., Civil Action File Number 2018 CV 01845, which was removed to the United States District Court under the same two parties, or same parties, Civil Action Number 118 CV 09, 05905 CAP, to resolve that case in the amount of $15,000. The second is to authorize or to enter into agreement for the purchase and sale, I mean, the purchase of property at 2340 Highway 138, Jonesboro 30236, in the amount of $275,000, plus, what was it? 950 for appraisal, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect the appropriate revenue source and expense, and authorize the chief, the chairman to execute any documents necessary to complete the purchase of that property.
Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second? Commissioner Henry seconded the motion. Are there any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. So move. I'll second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.